I'm being 30, 7:38, Alcoholics meeting to order. I'll start off by introducing the board. Our panel of greats, Howard Anderson, James Noyes, Tony Henninghan, and Jerry Stetson, and Donna Carter are recording. Secretary, I'm Hugh Hurley, the chairman. This is a continuation, or many continuation, of a public hearing for the Meadowwoods Estates subdivision located along the Brockton line, south of West Chestnut Street. This is a public hearing, so people will have an opportunity. If they like to, to have any concerns, we'd be glad to listen to them. I just ask that you wait until we get the presentations over with and that you ask the questions through the chair. And if you do wish to speak, that you introduce yourself. We know a lot of you because you've been here a few times before, but we don't know everybody, but welcome. I'll start off by asking the proponent to introduce himself and make his presentation.
How are you, Mr. Chairman? Members of the board. My name's Rick Lawton, and I've been here a couple of times in the past. I think the last two times I have been before the board on behalf of Meadowwood. Just by way of background, I want to introduce some of the abuttes. There are three abuttes to this project. I have members of the Petronelli family here in support of the subdivision. I have members of the Crowley family here, the second abutte. The third abutte is George Malek. He couldn't make it here tonight. He supports the subdivision. Also, before the board, you'll recall Frank Gallagher as the engineer who presented to the board the subdivision. It's a 31-lot subdivision, and for the purposes of illustration, does there any need to see that plan again?
I think we know.
We saw that, okay. So Frank would be here for anyone to have questions. Again, by way of background, the last two times I was here, the chair and members of the board are familiar with the fact that we couldn't go forward because there was an issue of access to the subdivision. There was also inquiries by members of the board about the status of the permanency of easements from the Brockton land to the West Bridgewater subdivision, so that those people would enjoy the right of access in perpetuity. And since then, I've prepared copies of the plans, easements that have been recorded, giving that right in perpetuity to the subdivision of West Bridgewater. And most recently, just before, after our last meeting, we were waiting for some resolution from the Superior Court relative to an endorsement of an A&R plan in Brockton to Patricia's path, which was denied by the planning board in Brockton, and it was reversed by the Superior Court in Plymouth County. And I sent that decision to the chair. So we're before the board, asking for the board to approve a subdivision consisting of 31 house lots and conferring a benefit of approximately half a million dollars a year in real estate taxes alone to the town of West Bridgewater. And I won't belabor the point, so I'll let the members of the board inquire of the engineer or any others that are here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Lawton. I wanted, I've got a couple of things to get out of the way. I've got some emails from people that wanted to be, let their feelings be known, which we've had others in the past, but I want to acknowledge them for the record. These are all people, I'm not going to read them all through, but they all have concerns with the subdivision, much similar to the concerns that have been raised before, but Barry Herriman, San Forn, Patricia Lovett, San Forn, Ryan and Elder Sacco, San Forn, Tina Alex Novich, San Forn. So add it to the record. Also, I got a letter from the fire chief that I will read into the record to whom it may concern. The average response time to your proposed subdivision, subdivision on a clear day is 10 minutes. This subdivision is one of the, if not the farthest response area we would be responsible for. As fire chief of the town of West Bridgewater, I find it my responsibility to advise you with the following life-saving measures I have for your proposed subdivision. Adequate water supply. Due to the extended response time of 10 minutes, fire and smoke will have tremendous head start. Being able to adequately flow water to extinguish internal fires within the subdivision is imperative. This water supply can be achieved by having approved fire hydrants located within the subdivision in home sprinklers. My second recommendation is for home sprinklers. Home sprinklers are an imperative life-saving measure, and I strongly recommend being added to each of your, he has 20 plus, I wasn't sure, he asked me and I wasn't sure of the whole number, and you, Mr. Lawton, has confirmed that it's 31. Proposed single-family homes, these sprinklers will reduce civilian deaths by 80% and reduce direct property damage per fire by fire, by about 70%. Sprinklers would be able to contain the fire in order to get people out of their homes in time and matter. Significant research has conducted on the cost associated with fire sprinkler installation and places the national average of $1.50 per sprinkler square foot. Home sprinklers would provide homeowners with an extra time to evacuate inside by Lincoln Tebow Fire Chief. One of the reasons I bring that up is, is Mr. Lawton has proposed that this is not a subdivision because he was not able to divide a portion of their land. They own, I believe it's 43 acres of land, and I don't think we need the whole thing, but I will, just as a reminder. Sure, everybody, that this is a subdivision in West Bridgewater with this line being the municipal division line, and this is what West Bridgewater is, going to be, the subdivision will be. This property in here is where the, is where the concerned area is, because this will be the only complete access, full-size road access into this subdivision, through this So with that in mind, and one of my concerns is, in the chapter 41, section 81m, this is, known as the subdivision control law, and section 81m is the purpose of the law, and it says in part, "The subdivision control law has been enacted for the purpose of protecting the safety, convenience, and welfare of the inhabitants of the town in which it is or may be, they have to be put in effect by regulating, laying out, and constructions of ways in subdivisions providing access to the several lots there, but which have not become public ways, and also for securing safety in the case of fire, flood, panic, and other emergencies." And then further on, it says for securing adequate provision for water, sewage, drainage, and underground services, fire, police, and other similar equipment. And lastly, "And for coordinating ways in subdivision with each other and with the public ways in the city or town in which it is located and the ways of enabling subdivision." My question now is, have you come up with a way of servicing this area with water? I know a few things have been tossed around in the past, but can you bring us up to date? Are you able to supply fire protection, which would mean water mains and hydrants to this area?
I'll defer to Russ Messina with that, because, Russ?
Yeah?
The question was about providing water to the subdivision of West Bridgewater?
The West Bridgewater Water Department said they would let us run the water main down Walnut Street into the property. We explained to them how we were going to get direction of boring underneath the wetlands so we don't have to disturb it, and they said they'd be only too happy to sell us water.
Okay, I was in contact with them recently, and they said, "Nothing is going on. You just kind of dropped, you haven't come forth with any plans or design of what you're going to do, how you're going to do it." So you're still saying you're going to come in, or you're saying at this time you're going to supply water via Walnut Street and George Morris property?
Yep. Yeah, the plans weren't done, I think we wanted to put the horse before the cart, get approval, and then they have met with the water department, or the engineer, whoever it was, I know that that discussion was, and they talked about the type of main and so forth that they needed, so that's been addressed. They just haven't done the plans or physically done that until this had been approved.
Okay, but, so if you are going to bring water in, it's going to be West Bridgewater Water and not trying to get to Brockton?
Yep.
Okay. We have always said we wanted it to be, the connection to this area that you're proposing to subdivide to be connected to existing streets, namely, the only existing one you can get to is West Chestnut Street. And we wanted it to be as an approved way under the subdivision control law, because as we read it, that is, the subdivision control law is, is so that it's enacted so that it can address all the issues, and by regulating the layout and construction of ways in a subdivision. Now, you have tried to utilize the site plan review process, and in the site plan review process, right at the beginning is the, is a threshold, and one of the things that, one of the items in the threshold is, any development located on an unconstructed or unimproved way not covered by subdivision control, or any development that requires utility extension. Getting a street into services is covered under 81m. How do you, I know you, you felt you did it with the approval not required, but that was to divine another plan, which was not the plan of this.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, you asked at a prior meeting to show you an example of a road that was approved without subdivision approval, and I approved, I provided it to you, and it was approved by you. There was a grant of an easement on a 40B owned by William Adams. I sent that to you. You asked me for an example, I gave it to you. So you have signed off on that type of road.
We didn't sign off on it, but a 40B is not under subdivision control. That is a completely, that's a complete separate chapter of the National Laws.
But I won't, I'll defer to Town Council, that is your guide, because I certainly don't want to give you and the members of the board legal advice, but the Superior Court just submitted a decision, Assistant Counsel Tony Donigan is here to confirm that, and they confirmed that the road was approved, and it's not a subdivision. So we keep going around and around on this, the need for subdivision control, and I would have you refer to the law, because we have a rule of, you know, there's the woman with the blindfolds on holding the scales of justice, there's a rule of law, and the rule of law was just handed down, the decision by the Superior Court. So, you know, subdivision control doesn't apply to that private road, and the court just confirmed that. They reversed the city of Brockton. Now, you asked if there was an example of a roadway in the town of West Bridgewater, and as you recall, you agree with me that I sent you a copy of a plan?
You sent me a copy.
That I found at the registry of deeds, two roads, and it was a grant of an easement, and it wasn't a subdivision.
It was a driveway into what was going to be a 40B development, and 40B is different than chapter 41. We're in chapter 41, which is the Subdivision Control Act, and 40B is the affordable housing comprehensive plans.
Well, I'll do this. I mean, I don't want to argue with the chairman and the members of the board.
No.
We came for a decision, and you would either vote it up or vote it down, and then I would look for findings from the board, and then I'll take the next step on whether or not, how we want to enforce it.
Okay, I just want to make sure, trying to bring everything up to date, because we have been discussing it for a long, long time, and...
And I provided you that plan, and that was months ago, and I said, "This is an example of the type of road that you requested." You said, "Mr. Lawton, can you find a road in the town of West Bridgewater?" Sure enough, I went down, there was a plan there that you approved into a big subdivision and wasn't subject to the subdivision control law. It was a grant of an easement that provided a road.
It's to a small lot that they're going to put some elderly housing on. It's a comprehensive 40B project. That is not a 31-lot subdivision. We're talking two different things, but, okay, if... Yeah, I'm just trying to get some of these things set, because the way I understood the, as it was presented to the thing, and I don't want to argue the whole case before the, with the Brockton, but that in it, Mr. Albany said, "The plan before the board maybe characterizes as a one-lot or perimeter plan." That's, you narrowed down the scope of it. You didn't say, "This is going to be a roadway to a 31-lot subdivision." In fact, earlier on in it, he said, Mr. Albany's informed the... Okay, no, this wasn't to the court.
Let me just highlight this, is that 81m also indicates that municipalities have no authority over roads that grant access to other lands. Will you agree with that? Because that's what 81m says, and actually, that's in the court's decision, so that the use of the road in Brockton, that could be a subdivision in the future. Five or 10 years from now, my clients may go before the city of Brockton to subdivide that road, but for the time being, it's just a private road that provides access to the subdivision of West Bridgewater, and that's what the court said.
Well, with that in mind, if that is continued on, we want to have an approved road that was done according to the law to continue this on. But, okay, so I think we can agree to disagree.
Well, yeah, and I'll defer to Town Council for the town of West Bridgewater to comment on that and guide you on.
Well, these five people here, we're the ones that are going to make the decision.
I understand.
It isn't, Town Council, he doesn't have a seat on this court.
No.
He doesn't even live in this town. We're elected by the townspeople of this town.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but when it comes to complicated legal matters, especially when it comes to planning and land use, I would imagine that you defer to Town Council, and that's totally up to you.
Well, this board, between us, we have 130-some years of experience, and the youngster here, he's been on for over 12 years, so we've been around a little bit. But I'm not, I'm not saying we know everything, and I'm not, I'm not saying that. We do have questions of people at times. I'd also like to, just for clarity, is the owner of this property, I believe on the plan, it was, it was stated as being Meadowwoods LLC, Meadowwood LLC, and yet, when you sold it, the conveyance of the easement was Russ Messina as the manager of Meadowwoods, and the grantor was Patricia's path, path, realty, that'd be for the area of front. But I went checking the, the town of West Bridgewater's listing, some of the land is owned by Meadowwood LLC, which is a parcel that was acquired by, from Mr. Gamble, his estate, and then the others is in the, is still in the name of Petronelli.
Petronellis are here, they convey to Meadowwood, so they're indeed...
Can I be heard on that?
Yeah.
It sounds like, yes. Would you introduce yourself, please?
Yeah, I'm Attorney Ben Albany's. I'm one of the co-managers of Meadowwood LLC, and I brought that to the attention of the assessors' office, and they were in error, and they were supposed to rectify that months ago. So that's an error.
Okay, no, that's why I'm asking, Tom, just, I'm just trying to...
I know it's confusing.
I'm just trying to figure out, so...
Do you want to know who Patricia's path is, Patricia's bath, Realty Trust, and why we had to do that?
Okay.
I mean, you may already know.
No, I don't.
Well, you can't convey an easement to yourself, so you have to have two separate entities. We did easements, we did cross easements, so that the Brockton property had easement through West Bridgewater, and the West Bridgewater property had an easement to Chestnut Street.
Okay, so with that in mind, at one time, did Meadowwood LLC own all the property in itself?
Yeah.
Okay, so then, you, with that in mind, when you come in for a subdivision, the subdivision is really the whole property. It's a subdivision in two separate towns, or in a town and a city, because you're putting your lots and you're coming into another parcel. Now, you have divided that off so that you could do it, but really, that portion in Brockton was part of the, was, if you owned it all together, it was part of the subdivision. I know because it's in two different communities, it's in two separate deeds, but it was still, you said you owned it all, so you conveyed, you conveyed the Brockton section out to another entity that was part of the subdivision.
It was not part of the subdivision. The subdivision is what you have on that plan in front of you.
Right, that's what you're showing us, but what I'm saying is, that subdivision that you're showing here doesn't have any access on any, on any street, any way to get to it.
Yeah.
It isn't on there, so it's, no street shown on there. It's a, it's an island sitting out in the middle of the woods.
Well, it can't be, Brockton property can't be presented to West Bridgewater Planning Board for approval.
I realize that, I really do.
So you're creating conditions that cannot be met.
No, all we're asking is, you go through the proper channels that the state wanted to go, the subdivision control law, and come up with a road, approved road, so that these people that buy a property have access to the property over approved...
Hugh, you know as well as I that that property cannot be, it does not have to be compelled to be approved under subdivision control, because it's not a subdivision. So you're creating a condition that cannot be met. So what you're doing is making the West Bridgewater property worthless, because your conditions cannot be met, and you know what the consequences of that will be.
Mr. Albany's, you already went before Brockton, and you, and you went to them through the planning board's father subdivision control process, and you've got a subdivision approved. They had a, one of their regulations was you could not have a dead-end road more than 700 feet, so your road wasn't, but you did...
That wasn't the condition. The condition was that it would be a permanent dead end, and that violates chapter 41, section 81Q. Read it.
So you have a problem with that?
So I didn't want to litigate with Brockton over another claim that was not supported by the statute, so that's why I withdrew it. Not that, not because it was a 700-foot cul-de-sac, but because they were making a condition that could not be met and was in violation of statute. So that's why I withdrew it. So you know, you know as well as I that this is a situation that you've created in conspiracy with the city of Brockton to prevent this subdivision, and there will be consequences.
If I might, if I, let me just, if I could just add to that, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, I need to react to that. Nobody has done anything in conspiracy with anyone, and I think that's inappropriate, and I resent you even saying it.
I didn't say it to you.
No, well, we're not, we're not, we're not going to get in a name call, and, no, no, we're not.
Well, at least I have a name tonight.
No, we're not.
At least I have a name tonight. I didn't have a name last night.
Mr. Albany's, ask him to leave.
Please be quiet, you're not recognized by the chair.
Mr. Lawton, so, and we don't want to relitigate this, but I will highlight this, because all the members of the board have seen the decision of the court. Now, there was a prior subdivision filed by Mr. Albany's at one time, he withdrew that, he never acted on it, and the court said that, his motivation for filing this A&R endorsement, the plan that was submitted in February 2021, is, the prior plan is irrelevant, and I draw your attention to the case that you're familiar with, Mr. Chair, the Cumberland Farms versus the town of West Bridgewater, in which you denied an endorsement, and it went up to the court, and the court said that the fact that they reduced, they eliminated the perimeter plans to avoid zoning bylaws or what have you at that time, was irrelevant. The motivation was irrelevant, so the discussion shouldn't be about what he did three years ago in the city of Brockton. The courts have decided that the road is endorsed, and the road is a legitimate roadway into this 31-lot subdivision of West Bridgewater, and I'm not going to say, "You folks have been terrific," I just would like you, as a board, to make a decision so that we can move on with it, and we're going to move on with it one way or another. So, you know, the decision's been made, it's been before the board, I'm here, the two, two of the three abuttes to the property are here, and again, we're trying to litigate, we're trying to discuss issues that I think have already been addressed, and I don't want to get in an argument about that.
Okay, and I understand that, I'm just trying to see if it's any way that you can, all we're asking for is an approved subdivision, and I, and I think you can do it, we're asking for, but, Mr. Noyes, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I've been trying to wrap my head, I, you know, I understand the whole A&R thing. How does the court's pretty much decision that the A&R is valid relate to the site plan approval, though? Aren't they two separate issues? One is an A&R for the lot, and they said, "Yes, we can approve the A&R," but you went back, you also have a site plan approval, and I didn't read that in the decision that because we approved, or because the court approved the A&R, that automatically says the site plan is approved?
In summary, because it's a private roadway, I don't believe that legally we need even site plan approval. The town of West Bridgewater... The town of Brockton, the City of Brockton, some time ago promised, under a prior administration, promised water for that subdivision. We got letters from the Water Department and so forth to substantiate that. So, at that time, Mr. Albinis and Mr. Messina submitted this Patricia's Path roadway, which showed utilities, anticipating that they were going to get city water. And then things changed, as they always do. The only consequence is change. Now, the site plan review was one thing. And that was before this board, I'm not sure you were here, sir, but the Chair said, I'd like a reported plan showing the roadway. So, Mr. Albinis took the A&R plan, and you're familiar with the plan. The plan says there are no buildable lots. It disavowed any intent to have a buildable lot. It showed merely one lot that under 81P should have been endorsed. It didn't show a subdivision. And so, the point that I'm trying to make to the Chair and to the members of the board is that the plan that was submitted to the City for A&R endorsement met all the requirements of 81P and should have been endorsed. And it was unclear why it wasn't. Mr. Albinis wasn't there. He was ill. No one called him. And it was acted on and denied. And then, the denial went to the Superior Court. And the Superior Court acted on a motion for summary judgment that the City brought in under 56C. It becomes a little complicated. They have the authority to find where justice lies and find against the moving party. And that's what they did. So, they flipped the Planning Board and they said that the plan is reversed and should have been endorsed. So, I don't want to get confused with the two plans. They are identical. The plan that was submitted for site plan review in 2020 is identical. But Frank Gallagher is here. And Frank, they wanted to make it clear, under the new cases that came down, the Crocones case, that the plan didn't intend to have any buildable lot. So, it said that this is one lot. And it said, this is not a buildable lot. And then, under the endorsement for the Planning Board, it said, by endorsing this plan, you're confirming that it's not a subdivision and that there are no buildable lots on the plan. So, that's the plan that the City refused to endorse. And the courts flipped the City and said, you have to endorse that plan. It doesn't show a subdivision. All it shows is a private roadway. So, I hope I didn't confuse you more than...
Yeah, I still, that doesn't, I understand that part. I don't understand why you went back for site plan approval. But, and I brought this back, actually, a couple of things. I wasn't here at the August 3 meeting, but I want it on record that I did review the tape afterwards. And I've also read the meeting minutes. And I filed the, whatever, the Mullins Rule. I filled that out. So, I just want that on the record, too. But, you know, I go back to, I don't know, and I know we brought this up before, there's been no, there's been no case where this, where a town has been able to approve a subdivision off a roadway that was created either through the site plan review process of the A&R. Mr. Albinis said that. I looked, I spent, you know...
I sent the plan, and I wish I brought it. I sent the plan to the Chair. And it was a plan of a roadway in the town of West Bridgewater.
But was the subdivision created?
Yeah, it was a subdivision for 15...
It was a driveway, you know, 4UB. So, it was off the...
But there was no subdivision.
There was no subdivision.
No subdivision.
And it was approved by the town.
But that's what I'm saying. This is a subdivision. So, there is a difference that we're, you're asking us...
But again, my apologies, but the roadway into Brockton is legit road. I mean, that will stand the test of any legal challenge. So, you have a legitimate access. And you've got reciprocal easements from Patricia's Path to Meadowwoods is a perpetual easement that these people will enjoy. So, that's a moot point, I think, is the access part of it. And again, I'm not telling you to defer to Town Council, but if I was having a bilateral thoracic sympathectomy, I'd call a specialist. And I'm not saying that you folks aren't skilled on that, but the case law would indicate that the access is solid. And that's the only point. And the Chair was kind enough to continue it pending the resolution of the court decision. The court's decided, and I'm here before the board. And again, I get better things to do.
And honestly, I'd rather, you know, obviously, you're dealing with laypeople here. I mean, you know, you do have experience. And like Hugh said, we've been here for 1,000 years.
127,000.
Oh, yeah. I would just like something, you know, and again, I spent, I would love to do nothing more, you know, to approve this subdivision. I spent three hours today trying to find a case where it said, yes, the court could, you can approve this. There's nothing there. And I think, you know, it was admitted by, at one of our meetings, that there is no, there is no, this is a precedent. You know, clear and simple. Next week, Market Basket comes to come in, say like, hey, we built our driveway to subdivision standards. We want to build a subdivision on that Market Basket. I think we're setting a precedent here. You're asking us to set a precedent. But one other thing, and I'll just let you guys go, too, is it's like, I don't know right now if that road is not improved. Right now, it's a gravel roadway.
Right.
As far as I know, you know, we cannot approve a subdivision on an approved road. It's got to be improved.
But you can put the condition that it's approved conditioned upon the completion of the roadway.
And what is the status of that? Because I know the site plan approval only has a few months to go, correct?
We don't need site plan approval. We don't need it. It's a private road on private property. And that came from the surveyor's handbook.
All right. I won't argue about that. But that's one of my concerns, too, is that right now, that road has been, it's not improved. And we, it's not a safe, we can approve the site plan based on, you know, safe and convenient access. And right now, there is not.
Well, can I just make this recommendation so that my clients paid initially $40,000 and another $10,000, I think, towards legal? You know, and I indicated to the Chair, on behalf of my clients, I authorized the town to spend the money to get a legal opinion to address any of your concerns because we certainly want those resolved. And this is, I've just been here three times. My clients have been here a half dozen or a dozen times. It's been going, this is getting old, almost as old as the chairman says collectively, you guys are. But it's been going on for a while. And I would only suggest that because the Chair and I agree to disagree. You know, I do have a decision that I'll sit on all day long. I've seen a few of them in my day, and that one's a good one. And if the board would be kind enough to spend my client's money and get, you don't have to use Town Council, send it to outside council and address the three or four issues that you have and see if you can do that. I'm all on board with that. Again.
Let me, in fact, you brought up something. We have only looked at the access to this. We have not reviewed the subdivision itself. I know it's a couple of minor things that I saw write on, but we have not done any depth review. The money that you put in the account for review, we haven't spent it on that because we didn't feel we were at that point. You know, we didn't want to do that and then say, well, we kind of do it over here. Because I don't think it'd be fair to spend as, when we get, when we're comfortable with the access to the site, then we will review the plan. So, I just want to say on record, the individual plans, the lots, that configuration, we haven't reviewed. So, we're still at a point where...
Are we still dealing with access, then?
Access, so, right now, I think one of the best ways to characterize it is, it's an incomplete submittal because it's something missing there. So, we haven't reviewed the other part.
So, can I ask you to do this? Then if that's your position, Mr. Chair, and it's the position of your co-members on the board, then vote it down and give me a written decision. And because I'll get that, I think we can get that resolved quicker than coming back and talking about access again.
I...
So, that would be fine. And I respect, I respect you guys. I do. I do, I respect you, but I'd like a decision.
No. Mr. Lawton, I understand that. In fact, I'm glad you said it because I think we're at that point. I think, I think, I think we've beaten it up and we've...
Yeah, we have.
And now, we have to move on. With that being said, before, anybody on the board have anything whether they want to say, okay, this is a public hearing. I know we had a chance to hear from you people before. We understand your concerns there, but we, it's really, we can approve or not approve a Brockton lot. That's a Brockton thing. All we want to do is see a road, inadequate approved road into it. But if there is anybody that wants to speak, because it is a public hearing, I feel that I have to open it up to you. But I think, I think your position, we understand pretty much the neighborhood's, the neighbor's concern on this week. You know, I had, I have three or four new letters, and we've got files with many others in it. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So, move.
Second. Any further discussion on it? Okay. The, Mr. ...
Wait, it's 11:12.
Yeah, we got a motion in place. Mr. Anderson, how do you vote? Do you vote to close if others...
Yes.
Mr. Stetson, how do you vote? Mr. Kinnonham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Annoys, how do you vote?
Yes.
And the Mr. Hurley votes, yes. So, the vote is unanimous that we close the public hearing. We will take this all under advisement and prepare the actual wording of the, of whatever we're going to do. And we will take it up at our next business meeting, which will be two weeks from tonight, which will be November 16. I think we have some public hearings going on, so it may not be at 7:30 because the advertised public hearings have to be there. But it's not a public hearing that we're going to be having, but it is a public meeting. That door has to be, remain open for all meetings. So, they are public. So, if anybody is curious or wants to come down, they can. And, but, that being said, this public hearing has been closed and finished. Ben, I'm going to go take a few-minute recess because I got to clean my desk off. I got all that stuff over there. Got to get back and get to the next people. So, if we could go into a recess for a few minutes. And I thank everybody for coming. Thank you, Mr. Lawton.
Thank you.
[inaudible]
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 Let me read the first decision.
Oh, okay, great.
I have some more stat here.
Time being eight thirty, I'll call this meeting to order. This is a application for a special permit for the operation of a line side scratch and dent repair to automobiles located at four hundred and five West Street. Requires a special permit for the proposed use of special permit, but the Water Resource Protection District and a site plan approval. And all will be handled by the planning board. I'd like to introduce the planning board. On my side, right is Howard Anderson, James Noyes, Tony Kinnahan, Jerry Stetson, our recording secretary, Donna Carter, and I'm the chair, Hugh Hill. This is a special, this is a public hearing for a special permit. And we have some people here to present it to us. I ask that you go through the chair, and when you do speak, that you introduce yourself into what your capacity is. And with that being said, what to hear from?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Attorney General Fleming, I represent Dent Wizard, the applicant. As you can see on the plans before you, proposal here is, the current building is operated by Enterprise. The proposal here is in the green section on the plan you see before you, and that would then be leased to Dent Wizard, who will then conduct their business, which is scratch removal and repair services to vehicles associated with the Enterprise fleet. This is not a scratch and dent removal service to the general public. These will only be vehicles that are, belong to Enterprise. So we won't have anyone coming from the general public coming up to this area. These are already cars that are on site with Enterprise. Now, as the chairman noted in the introduction, this property is located within the Water Resource Protection District, and thus requires a special permit from the planning board. We don't understand that this is one step, is likely that we will then have to go to the ZBA for a special permit from them as well. We figured practicality was, may be more sense to come to the planning board first for a special permit approval before we went to the ZBA. Now, at our recommendation, the client returned Burns McDonald's, prepared a report on if any impact in the water resources area. The report has been submitted, I don't know if the gentleman have copies with you. Provide if needed.
Is there drainage in the floors? Are you going to be putting drainage in the floors? In the other section? Because Enterprise with their truck end of the, I guess it's the West Street end of the building, they have stipulations. And they have a tight, it's got a tight tank, the drains go into the tight tank. And mainly, it's not, they're not, I believe they're not supposed to be doing washing, but it's like you bring something in and there's snow all over it, there's someplace for the snow to go. So are you going to be having any type of drainage inside these for washing a car?
Can I introduce Al?
My name's Aldo Pizan, I'm with Dent Wizard. Yes, we are going to have drainage attached to Enterprise water separator system.
You're just going to tap into?
We're going to tap into it, yes. We don't generate water, we do.
And what about fluids?
We don't deal with fluids. The only fluids that we deal with would be primers and some minor paint work, which is contained within a mixing room and sprayed inside a contained room, sprayed with. But other than that, we don't have fluids, no oils, no antifreeze, none of that stuff.
Now, as you, we'll see in the report generated by Brendan Fendy, Burns McDonald, and the author of the report, Larry Page is here to answer any questions you all have, is that there are several mitigation recommendations made in the report that Dent Wizard is more than willing to implement, and that once those are implemented, there is unlikely that the proposed operations will have any impact on the Water Resources Protection District.
Are there any liquids involved in any way? Do you have any cleaning or fluids? Are any of your products, are they liquids like a catalyst you have to mix or anything?
Yes, we do have liquids, but like I mentioned, what, stand up? They're all contained within a mixing room and used inside the spray booth itself. Other than that, like I said, there is no fluids.
Are you familiar with, we have two special permits for that property already. Are you familiar with them?
We were told that there, at some point, there were some issues with them, but they had been resolved.
They had, one was in fifteen and the other was in two thousand and eighteen. And one of them had a fuel dispensary. So that had all kinds of, kinds of things with it, sculpted invention and stuff like that. They had annual inspections, which I don't believe they've been coming with. I spoke to the building inspector about it one time. They spilled kits, but that vehicle appeared in, body washing, body washing out prohibited. It's accepted as allowed by special permit two ninety-eight, which is the one before.
Basically, all you're doing is knocking out, yeah, right? Like these guys that come around and knock your dent out of your cow or something?
Yes, so Dent Wizard does that as well.
Basically, yeah.
We do that and also cosmetic repair to vehicles. It's all minor work, we don't take radiator supports out. No, no, everything we do is a running vehicle, it's just a cosmetic issue. So if you've got a scratch on your door, a small dent, we can take care of it.
Yeah, that's basically what.
That's what we're doing.
Basically, yeah.
You don't do conventional bodywork, Bondo or anything like that?
We use minor filler, yes, but not, I mean, we're doing small stuff. We're not doing a quarter panel that's stove in and, you know, needs to be replaced. Nothing structurally, it's just light repairs.
Okay. Let me read the conditions that were put on the two thousand and eighteen report. Spilled kits, but you don't have any, this is going back when they had dispensing fuel. Vehicle repairs, repairs or maintenance, including vehicle washing, prohibited, except as per special permit two ninety-eight. I don't see anything in there that looks like washing or anything, so I don't. But what they basically, they didn't want to do a body shock type of thing. So, and what you're doing is you're doing something that won't, you're saying it won't amount to that. You're just doing it on a small scale.
It's not a small scale.
Rather than hearing defenders.
Yeah, there's not going to be cars outside with.
If they make it that bad, they're not looking to be wrapped.
That's not what we do, that's not what we specialize in.
And storage or oil or hazardous material? Because we were looking at them doing oil.
We don't, we don't deal with oil whatsoever. The paints, like I said, are kept in a.
Okay, you're not bringing in any fill material. This was because of the, in the rear of the pagamot. Limit the use of de-icing chemicals, you're not doing that because conduct tests in the infiltration-based soil testing, that's got to be in there. All, you're not, well, it says all loading will only be allowed along its way. So will it be coming in on trailer trucks or individually?
Well, what?
The cars.
They're not, they're already on site.
Already on site, okay. So, but this is still in force. I'm just reading through it to see if it's anything that would affect you.
Okay.
Special will not be filed, okay, as special limited to the applicant, okay. Now, are you part of Enterprise, Renicar, or you are second?
No, we are seconded.
You're seconded, okay.
All the vehicles will be doing for Enterprise? Okay, they're not bringing the general.
We don't, no, we're not, we're the retail public, we don't deal with her. That's not what we do.
Okay, and as far as the site plan review goes, you're not making any outside changes? You're not making any changes in parking lot, the lighting?
Outside, no.
For the record, Donna, he indicated that he was not, he didn't say it, but he indicated.
Okay.
Okay, with that.
No additional sign or anything like that?
Unless you want us to put up a sign.
Well, if you're only dealing with Enterprise, you're not advertising for something else.
I don't know if you want us to put up a sign so the fire department knows we're there or?
It probably should be on the building. But we do have a sign by the law, I think that's what he was getting at. You're not, you're not doing anything that would require that in it. See, a site plan review is basically the outside of the building. And you're coming in, it's just because of your use in the water protection, that's where you come. But it's not a site plan review, we really have nothing, no issues at all. And that was just, could have been an issue, it isn't an issue.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to accept it. Let's, we're going to make some findings.
You have, I was looking at the Burns McDonald, they have several suggestions on page seven. You're all good with those?
Yeah, Larry's one of them, yes, I am.
Okay.
Why don't we just blanket include the recommendations made by Burns and McDonald?
Okay.
Okay, we have to. We have to make some findings.
We basically are addressing this like we did the truck part, interior issues.
Yeah, interior, yeah, actually, even smaller than that, because the truck part was a lot bigger.
Yeah, they're going to be using, tying into the truck drainage system they put in for the interior of the building.
So that there is a wall there?
Yeah.
And the water separator is right up against that wall?
Well, the two things he was reading were on the big pocket lots they built out in the back.
Oh, that's kind of funny to know that's.
But that had its own set of things, it's like he was seeing the gravel and there was things because of the gas tanks and the, and they were going to have a fueling place there. And it, a lot of it was built into it, even though they're not doing it.
Okay, let me back up. I did not read the public notice since it began. The other one was a continuation, which I announced in a new one. Let me do my legalese and then we can carry on. Town of Westbridge, water notice the public hearing, notice is hereby given pursuant to Master of the Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section nine, Table of Use Regulation, Number fourteen, Section four point six, Water Resource Protection District, Section seven point two, Site Plan Approval submitted by owner, Dent Wizard International Corporation. Westbridge Water Planning Board, the public hearing on Wednesday, November the second, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven thirty in the McDonald Ground Conference Room at Town Hall. The intent of the plan is to open a line site, scratch and dent repair business to be located at four hundred and five West Street. A special permit is required for activity in the Water Resource Protection District. A site plan review is part of the special permit process. Copy of the proposal is available at the office of the town clerk, signed by the chairman. Got that out of the way. Okay, with that in mind.
Did you say outside of the ZBA too?
No, it's no reason to go to the ZBA.
We aren't sure, if we need to, we obviously will take that step.
Yeah, I thought you had said earlier.
It's a lot of years.
Yeah, it's all planning.
Will you be doing repairs on vehicles that are from out of state or other parts of the country, that kind of thing? Like they're an international company.
We're an international company, but we're not going to be bringing vehicles in from other states now.
Unless the cars belong to.
If Enterprise owns them, let's say they're registered in Hawaii, then yeah, we're going to fix them.
Oh, I'll go with you.
Okay. Let's go find them.
Okay, I want to see you drive from Hawaii to the West Coast. You do that?
Okay, we have to make some findings. This is the water resources in Section four point six. And in four point, six point nine point three, after notice in public hearing, after due consideration, any recommendations received from local boards within thirty days? And there's no recommendations worthy, Donna? I didn't see any in the folder here.
I know, I'm not sure at this point what in what folder, honestly.
No.
Don't ask it, go pick up the table either.
You're never going to live there.
The table is fine.
We don't want to break this table.
I'm great, bro.
It was properly put together, just that you've got to be a little shorter in your chair.
Okay, we don't, do not, this is, it goes out to seventeen different boards in the town. Usually, yours is fairly simple, some of them we get a lot of response. But we have to make findings in Section four point six point nine point three. A is consistent with the purpose and intent of Section four point six in protection of the water. Nothing is going to be done in our act. Is appropriate to the hydrology, natural to part of these soils and other characters of the site to be developed? I'm going to read these all through and then we'll quote. A C will not during the construction thereafter have any adverse environmental impact on the site. Well, the construction is all within anyways. I D will not adversely affect an existing designated future public wells. We have to make a finding that none of these are going to be affected. Entertain a motion?
So will.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, under Section. Okay, seven point, five point, three point one, special, the special permit granting society shall not approve any such authorities, unless it finds mischief to use of the site is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this bylaw. And A, the specific site is appropriate location for the use and structure conditions. B, the use as developed and operated will not adversely affect the neighborhood. C, there will be no nuisance or hazard to vehicles or pedestrians while volume greater than the capacity of streets affected. D, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of a proposed use. E, access to the site of the streets is appropriate for the type of vehicles involved. I'll entertain a motion to make a finding on those.
So will.
Okay, the motion is that you do not have any negative effect on any of these. Motion has been made, and second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yep, aye.
The vote is unanimous. Okay, and, and, uh, section seven point two, which is a site plan, we have to recommend the, uh, to the building commissioner, uh, findings. Basically, we recommend that the issue permit with, as, as the, as designed.
I'll make a motion to approve as deserved.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Okay, and then the final one, we have to, uh, issue it, this, a special, uh, special permit. And it is going to be made with conditions. And the conditions will be, if you read whatever that is.
Yeah, I would just, I want to... Yeah, I would just, rather than have them all subject to the conclusions made in the Burns McDonald report on page seven.
It, it was submitted with the application.
Yeah.
May I have a copy of that?
You, you, it's a whole bunch of copies.
All right, just checking.
If you have one.
Okay.
Okay, and, uh, and any of the, another condition would be any of the, uh, uh, conditions on proceeding, uh, approvals, namely number three forty-six and number two ninety-eight are still in force. I don't believe.
Okay.
I don't believe we have any, anything else. On that, okay, I'll, uh, need a, one more, uh, motion to approve the site plan approval with the conditions.
No move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion request. Any further discussion? Uh, Mr. Anderson, how to vote? You vote. Who will you vote?
I.
Mr. Norris, how do you vote? Mr. Kinnahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stetson?
Yes.
And Mr. Hurley votes yes. It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen.
This will see in Hawaii, right?
Do you happen to have a card or something? An email address? I do have, um, invoices for the advertising and I just wanna make sure I know where I'm sending it to.
My email's on there.
Okay, good. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all again.
Have a good night. Thank you very much. Take care.
Will be nice to her. If it was Larry, no.
I thought she was tonight.
Larry, no. Where, where is Larry now? Is he, is he?
Larry today is celebrating his mother's ninety-fifth birthday.
Good for him.
And then on Friday, he's going to California.
Full head of hair, he has good genes.
Yes, very good genes. No kidding. She still drives. She's incredible.
Wow.
But he's celebrate, has been celebrated for about a week, hasn't he?
Yes. Yes, he had, I'm sorry.
That's right. You can tell him we, we. We, we sent out.
I don't wanna get too close on him. Hey, away. Afraid you're gonna get it. Get it or something?
Slam dunk today. Slam dunk.
You're a lot nicer. He's just become old.
No, don't tell him that cause then he's gonna say, I need to retire.
Okay.
No, we're tired.
Time being eight fifty-three, we will open.
Got seven minutes, I gotta go to bed.
Okay.
Forty-five minutes ago.
Another special permit. Where is?
You can get, get a toilet.
I threw it out.
I, no, it's my own. Is that what you're trying to read?
Yeah. We wanna find, find the plans to.
I have the handouts. Do you want the small one?
Well, oh, yeah, the small one.
Oh, you better get it.
Okay, for the record.
I'm just going around.
We'll dig, we'll dig. For the record, I'm gonna read the notice of, of the, of the public hearing. Notice is hereby given pursuant to Master and the law, forty-eight, section nine, table of use regulation.
And I have to.
Number four.
It's okay. Okay, we're gonna jump on the table. It's not stapled to it.
Thank you. I know. Cause I know, know where nothing is for the rest of the evening. But like, they'll be happy.
Okay. And, as I was saying, uh, section four point six, water resource protection district and section seven point two, site plan approval submitted by Silver Engineering Association on behalf of the owner, A and G Manon, it's a Westbury water planning board, will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November the second, two thousand and twenty-two, at, uh, after seven thirty in the McDonald Conference Room at Town Hall. The intent of the plan is to construct a six thousand square foot addition for our veterinary clinic relocated at the junction, twenty-eight Pleasant and six fifty-two West Summit Street. A special permit is required for activity in the water resource protection district. Site plan review is part of the special permit process, signed by the planning board. Uh, this is a public hearing and, um, I asked you if you want to put off everything pursuant to the chair. We do not have anybody in the public, so I don't have to go on them. If you would please introduce yourself, um, and then, uh, make your presentation, please.
For record, I'm Silver Engineering, here representing A and G Management, here reading, um, proposal for a six thousand square foot veterinarian office at the corner of twenty-eight, uh, twenty-eight Pleasant and six fifty-two. And there's my presentation. Right there.
Where, where is that? Where is that now?
This is, um...
Is the building being built or is it already there?
No, this is proposed. Nothing's there.
Next to the one that's out front?
This is, this is where their original office used to be.
Yes.
Used to be just like a range house.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yes, that was right, right in here. It's this area right here. This is the existing twenty-eight Pleasant Street office.
That's the three story.
And we're over in the left is Barrett.
And that's the Barrett's parking lot.
Yeah, there, there's already construction going on in there, right? Is that nothing to do with you?
Yeah. No, that's, that's in the, uh, the steel company over in the corner.
Yeah, we, we came for an approval over here.
All right.
So that was clearing for that one. So we have parking in the front in accordance with the requirements for this new office. We call the office one per two hundred, six thousand square foot every two hundred. So we needed thirty. We're providing twenty-six in this area and then overflow for the whole, um, complex. Cause he has a hundred and thirty-two overall and now he's gonna have a hundred and thirty-five overall for parking. So the whole complex will provide enough parking needed. So no storage.
And is that still a new one ownership and just, at least, just building reasons? But you, you won't go in?
Yes. Um, stormwater is a combination of catch basins, oil grit separators, uh, into infiltration, uh, both to the front and to the side over where the, uh, the new addition to this building would be. There's some of it overflowing into this general area. So they're all, um, in there.
And does this come under the, uh, the town's, uh, drainage bylaw and the stormwater?
Stormwater. So we went through stormwater first and got it approved with a building that was looking for a variance for proximity property lines right away. Uh, zoning board said no. And so we have to go back to the stormwater permitting authority for a amendment. And the agent does know that. He's ready and willing to accept it. He doesn't see it as any conviction. So just a minor amendment.
I just wanted to make sure that, because we don't, we don't get to do drainage anymore.
Nope.
Okay, so it is being addressed.
So it is being addressed through them. They're, um, again, they approved it the first time when the building was situated close to the, the road. And they've seen this through the seventeen copies that were submitted and already see it as a minor approval process.
So you, so you have oil water separators and all that stuff?
I have catch basins, oil water separators, four foot separation, mounding, and I got sand and, and no limit.
Never mind, it's sitting on scene.
Yeah. Septic will be off to the side. Uh, we have to do additional test pits to satisfy border health, but it's all sand, so I don't anticipate any issue with that.
Do you need, uh, uh, titans for anything with the, the operating rooms and stuff like that?
No.
So, so it's, uh, now is, is, are they going to be operating, doing operations and stuff?
There will be procedure rooms. Um, and, and I'm Norm Whitaker with A and G Management with AP Whitaker. So my office is on the site as well. And I'll explain a little bit. This is an extension of the existing veterinary clinic across the street. So what's happening is they've outgrown that facility.
About twenty years ago.
They're looking at splitting the practice. The, the building across the street, existing building is gonna remain as the twenty-four seven hospital. They're moving what they're calling the general practice to this site. So this site will be like a seven AM to five PM. You have a sick dog or cat or you have a general checkup. You go into this building. They will have some minor procedures done. They haven't really defined those, but the main hospital is remaining across the street.
If there's any major stuff.
Yeah. So they'll do the vaccinations, probably since they had the area right there.
Yeah.
Is there a special permit for the other one? We get, are they, are they your grandfather?
I think they're grandfather.
Was that the one that's already there?
I didn't look into that.
That's already there.
Yeah.
Because that, that would be.
The only discussion I remember on that is when they did the addition, the last addition they put on the end, which was a number of years ago.
That was probably late eighty.
Well, yeah. And that was, the only question we had was the tanks with the septic. And I know, something sticks in my head. They had some sort of an ultraviolet.
Oh, you did?
The, the disinfectant that when it came from the building before it got to the tank, it went through this hoozing bloods. Because I think, whatchamacallit, it's got the same thing. Life care with this septic. It's just, and that's probably, in that amount of time, that's probably been updated and updated and updated.
There is a system in place there.
Yeah.
Lighting, what are you doing with lighting there?
Wall packs. Wall packs?
Wall packs.
Okay.
On the go. Down.
You, we, you do have, well, it isn't directly across. You do have one, I think it's only one residence left. So, and we, we've always been very concerned with.
Oh, this resident?
No, over, over here on Pleasant Street.
Oh.
Right there.
Yes.
They're all around. There's a proposal further down Pleasant Street for two or the houses are going to be.
I'm sure Derek would like to get a hold of it, but.
That, that house is probably, if anybody's gonna have any discussions, is where it's gonna come from.
Funny.
They're, they're on Barrett's all the time. Leaving doors open, the games playing. And they've lived there before Barrett's, before Charlie's.
I haven't memorized this book.
I know.
By the time you do, they'll change it.
Yeah. There will be a test next meeting.
I got a long way to go with the car.
Problem?
Yeah, you got the curbing running outside the layout.
Yeah, uh, I'm not sure why Larry did that, but he was under the impression that was going to be okay.
He always tells us, you do always, uh, he always, he's always, he's always better than.
We've been, we've been so swamped that he's actually been doing the drawing.
He's been working?
That's why you're getting into trouble.
So if, if, if I may, when Route twenty-four was built, for some reason or another, there was a taking out the corner of this property.
Very large taking.
So if you look at, at what on sheet three, the green line is the actual property line. But you can see where the, the street line is significantly closer to the corner than.
Yeah. It is using.
So this was.
It's not yours.
Yeah.
We have a second.
We do. Well, but that isn't parking. That's a driveway, so.
It is an access road.
Although we have. But for the parking, we have a second back.
Yeah, parking up in the corner too, though.
Yep.
Yeah, because, uh, when, when they did, did Barrett's, they put the pavement right at the property line. Then when we asked where you go to plow the snow, because we knew the town and how we filled that, that up, they, uh, they couldn't, couldn't answer us. But, uh, look, you know.
I wanna say four feet, five feet?
It is fine.
Wake them up. Yeah.
I can see you on the side of the room.
That happens to me. It must be the air over here.
Start looking forward to, um, things you can do in a, in a, uh, aqua, which I think, I think you're fine. I just wanna.
I don't believe there's anything with parking in an aqua.
No, but they, what he's doing in the, uh...
The use of the veterinary office?
Can you get your son to figure it out? See if he finds anything on the parking. I think it may be on the six point three pretty much.
This is on the general, is it?
Five feet. Six point three, point two, point one.
It doesn't specify property line to a resident or does it say property line to the street?
Yeah, no off-street parking area shall be located within five feet of a street line or within five feet of all other property lines except where a buddy uses shared parking. With a written contractual understanding.
You wanna wake up now?
Now we're over here with the excitement is.
That lot, that extra lot that Barrett has, do they rent that from somebody or do they own it?
No, that, that's a lot, that's a lot.
It's a lot.
We have a gentleman they bring up with Barrett.
Okay, yes.
The, the first weekend he opened, it was flooded with cars, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, okay.
So we've been having discussions that he's gonna need to push his patrons to use the parking rides.
Yeah.
Using the slot.
They're, they're using that too. Cause he, they, I remember we made him use a.
Put a crush, put a crush walk in there from there. And put that, and they had to put a brake in there. Put a crosswalk in there from there and they had to put a brake in the, in the curb and so instead of having to climb up over landscape. I don't think they'd rather crowd than they used to.
Certainly not.
Not like when they first built it.
No, I mean, when it was Charlie House, it was a Thursday night, Friday night, and Saturday night.
Yeah, but Charlie House, all they get are different.
Yeah, I think they were. They were, they were parking across the street on the grass. But they also were employing four cops. Some nights they had a paddy wagon.
Okay, so as far as the site plan portion goes, the drainage is being addressed, so we don't have to address that. The building is just another building on the lot, so we don't have to worry about setbacks from them other than the actual major perimeter sidelines, which... She's made it. Okay, so the only, one of the only hangups then is the fact that they are too close to the... How, how close is the... Where the parking lot is, the building directly north of it.
Can you bring that close to me?
No, I can, I can see it, but, but just, just...
I don't know what you're pointing at.
Okay.
So point.
Maybe, how close is that?
Well, that's definitely less than...
No, that is, but over here.
That's probably three feet. That's probably four feet if it's meant.
Okay, so, so you are...
Oh, yeah. How does the board feel about twenty-two foot eyes?
About what?
Twenty-two foot travel eyes.
So you got a twenty-four now?
Twenty-four now. If I can squeeze twenty-two here and a twenty-two there and I can make all those other encroachments go away.
Mr. Traffic Man? Our expert? The ro, the youngster?
Maybe. You're not going to be open certain hours, right, over there?
No.
It's, it's only...
Yeah.
Right in the business hours.
Yeah.
Right in the business hours.
So it's not going to be Charlie House, so I mean, Barrick's going strong.
Well, I mean, here, can you not shift all this two feet closer to the building?
This I don't see a problem with. I was actually trying to solve this problem by shifting this over a little bit and still keeping the sidewalk. So the front, I can, I'm sorry. I was trying to solve this problem.
Yep.
By doing a twenty-two and a twenty-two in order to get over that way.
But it would still, if you move that down a couple of feet...
But I have no problem, yeah, this, this would go down.
This would be twenty-four still.
And it could be twenty-four still. And that would help the handicap accessible.
Yeah, that part I don't have a problem with.
I was anticipating this and this one so that I could shift it all that way.
Yeah, yeah, I was more concerned about, you know, with the twenty-four and back and out.
I would keep this one twenty-four.
Yeah, twenty-two should be fine.
What's, what's the number of the book?
It was six point three.
Six point three, point two, point one. You said it was a test, I was... That was the five foot parking.
Six point three.
Okay, so, so it's from street line and property line or street line or property?
Well, the street line is the property.
Not, not in this case.
Yeah, well, they mean street, the street line is usually taking us to the right or...
It's our definition in that system.
Okay, so they're referring to the, to the parking, the same parking.
Yeah.
So as far as this other one, that's not parking in there, that's just continuing the sidewalk.
Right, so narrowing that down by two feet would get that curb off the, inside the property.
We'd like to get it inside the property, even though it's an obnoxious property.
Yeah, but I, I, what I'm trying to say, I really don't have a true problem with that one because it is an Indian, they don't say...
Well, yeah, but right now it is old.
But it is old, so it is an encroachment.
So I won't get five feet, but I'll get it on the property.
All you say.
Yeah, which is fine, yeah, because it's not, it's not parking.
Where is your dumpster?
Did you have a particular spot? I was just having a...
I'd like to put it next to the dumpsters that I already have, but behind another building.
You're right in there. Go to page two.
Right in that corner?
The back, on the back corner here.
So anybody here is going to walk back there to do dumpster duty?
So. It's only fifty feet further than people level.
They're going to do dumpster duty, so dumpsters now are right here, or in this area here. So they're going to have dumpsters continuing this area? Just those two, okay, I'm sorry, so...
Probably adding a third one to that.
Not this area, that one, I think. So dumpsters will be on premises down, down... Are you trying to look at it on there? Wouldn't be on there, look up page two. I did an overall existence. So... You can, no, um...
All those?
Yeah, so... It's okay?
There we go.
Here. So come back between, in front of building D, behind building B, there you go, dumpsters.
All those things.
Yeah, those things.
Those.
Sorry.
Boy, these things don't work the way they should. Okay, all right. So you, so you, so you've...
Yes.
You've got it.
You can do the dumpster area.
That's all, all in.
I'll give you the solution.
And it's, it's not needing any, 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 you've got all kinds of space. And the parking, we've got a huge parking lot available. They don't have any time to tell us other than Friday night.
Other than Friday nights at them.
The same thing with the snow storage, I threw a couple of little squiggles in everywhere, but in the end, they'll just pile it where it's not in the way on one of his...
Yeah, it's, it's there and you got maybe a little line there.
Yeah, a little bit in there and then a little bit in there.
You got some over, it looks like you got it over the line in the street, can I do that?
So you don't feel bad, we pick on Larry if he's lost.
Yeah, but we don't find things with Larry, do you?
No, he's, he's just better at hiding them.
He likes to...
No, he has somebody do them.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
He doesn't do the planning.
Yes, that's, that's, that's an easy one.
Okay. Moving right along. I don't see a problem with it, no.
No, it looks pretty good, I think.
I think so, too.
I think all the findings look great.
You got to make a, make a motion to accept. No, 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 yes, no, we have made the finding.
What do you keep looking for?
It's in here.
Does it fit the area?
I got one with all highlighted.
You needed to have a tab, but we don't have it.
I've got one somewhere in my suitcase.
Yeah, yeah. See, we're in a different room, he's all screwed up.
I get it.
You know, he's like somebody, if you take him outside of his house, turn him around in a circle, he's lost.
Yeah, next thing you go to tell him, because I'm old. You just wait, that's...
Well, he's got his grandfather at the end of the table, so...
I hope you're nice, but you know that, right?
Why?
It doesn't matter.
You're stretching my elders. You hurt all my elders.
Even you.
Damn.
Even the young guy.
Sorry.
I don't know.
I know, you were very helpful.
The camera man behind the...
I don't know.
Donna, what, what's the number of the section? Call it off, we're going to make, make the findings.
Oh, um, I don't know.
I told you.
We do know, it's on the thing, it's on the hearing notes.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. Four point six.
That table's solid.
Seven point two, four point six.
There was seven point two, but individual...
But once it clicked in, it just...
We always do it under seven point two.
No, the first one that I read off.
Six, oh, that one, six point three, point two, point one?
Okay, six point three.
Okay.
Oh, I took this one off. I'm ready for bed, sorry.
Six point three, point...
Six point three, point two, point one, you even look at that one again?
Yes.
No. Six point...
You can't really change too much with the...
That's off street path. No, when I read the, the...
So then now it is?
The, the findings.
Findings, please.
Findings? Oh, that's right, that's right.
Yes, for snipping down a little bit.
Okay, um, let's see here. Bad enough I write it, now you want me to find it. I have that idea, it's a good idea.
Drake, no, Drake, I'm not, yeah. We were, so you, you didn't have to go for that?
Yeah, it's, it's this one right here.
Then the owner passed away suddenly, so that...
That's what slowed it down.
Yeah. He was pregnant with me on the property and he died suddenly last December.
Wow.
So we were at that point where we were confessions and everything got put on hold and took until two months ago it was straightened away. Somehow foundations ran, the building's coming in late this month.
Is it getting better and better getting buildings now or it's still tough? I know a guy who was building a place in...
Four point six, point nine, point...
Say, say it again.
Four point six, point nine, point three. A through D.
Just wait, four point six, point nine.
And then?
No, just one at a time, I only got to do one at a time.
Okay, A through D.
You're not sitting next to me. I'm letting Tony sit here tonight.
Yeah, all right, okay, we have to make the following findings. Under four point six, point nine, point three, A is, is consistent with the purposes and intent of section four point six. B is appropriate to the hydrology, nitrous imparting, soil, and other characteristics of site to be developed. C will not, during construction and thereafter, have any adverse environmental impact on the water resource protection of the district. And D will not adversely affect the existing or designated future public development.
Motion to accept is...
Second. We have a motion and a second to affirm that none of these will happen. All those in favor?
Yep. Aye.
Vote is unanimous. What's the next one, Donna?
Um, seven, seven point five, point three, point one, A through F, I think it is.
Five, three. Okay, section A decided specifically appropriate locations and use, structure, and conditions, B, the usage developed or offering, will not adversely affect the neighborhood, C, there will be no nuisance or hazard of weight. The vehicles or pedestrians are volume rated in the capacity, D, adequate and appropriate facilities for proper operation, and C, the site, access to the site or its streets is appropriate for the type of vehicles involved. Do we have a motion to affirm that these have not affected?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous. What's the next one for the site plan?
I don't think I put that down, the numbers. We usually just put the, um... We just, a motion to grant the special permit with whatever conditions. And, yeah, and the other one is the site plan, but there's no amount, site plan seven point two. Water protection has four point six.
Okay, under seven point two site plan review, and a, and a motion to recommend to the building commissioner, commissioner, the issue of the permit will be based on the plans provided.
So...
With revisions.
Revised.
With revisions.
With revisions.
So we can't, because there's R, then they can't have R.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all of, any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And now, we have to do the... What was the last one?
Four point six, water resource.
Yeah.
We still got to do our meeting after this.
We don't. I'm surprised the last of those they did.
Have you gone in behind the molding?
Oh, down below, down there, yeah.
Oh.
Okay, uh... Intertain a...
Ninety feet, almost, square feet.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the site plan, I mean, the special committee has presented.
I'm moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Anderson, how do you vote?
Favor.
Mr. Norris, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Kinnaman?
Aye.
Mr. Scottson? And Mr. Hurley votes affirmative. We forgot the conditions. An addendum to the, to the motion, that if there are any conditions on the existing animal hospital, that they will probably be the same because it's just like usage. I can't think of any other conditions we leave on there. That'd be the only...
Same operation over the outside.
And, and it sounds like a bit less of, but let's just vote on a condition, if it is, that it will just be the same, same thing. And if there, if there are no conditions over there, then it would be approval without any conditions. May we, a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes. Aye. All like that?
Okay, with that being said, uh... Get your...
Provide the plans, got it.
Whatever the addendums, corrections, alterations, whatever.
Yes.
You can call it and get them to us. And...
Tell Larry we voted him out of the vote.
He's going to want to retire and I'm not ready for that yet.
He's ready for you.
Tell Larry that the board would like to wish his mother congratulations.
Happy birthday.
Have him put up with him.
It's also his half birthday today too, so he wanted a happy birthday to his half.
He's a half birthday?
Seventy and a half today. No, we don't do that, we do it unless we're partying, five and a half.
He just likes to party. I saw him someplace and I said, can you tell me a list of those restaurants you keep going to, the Italian, they all sound good.
Right?
Okay, with that being said, this is the end of our public hearing, some evening.
Thank you, have a good night.
Good night, Donna.